By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Prior to this evening's meeting, we Borough Council held an executive session on property matters. Borough Council also, prior to this meeting, held an executive session on legal and personnel matters. The first item on the agenda this evening is the, where is it on here? Mr. Tino, if you'll go up and we'll celebrate Ms. Kosha's 100th birthday.
She can stay seated. You just stay there. You're okay? Okay.
Do you want to come up to the podium or you want to stay where you're at?
You have to. Go up there.
It's very exciting.
You're going to stand? Okay. Go ahead.
Very good. Okay, great. So I am not the one that's 100, but I have to hold this out here. So, "A proclamation recognizing the 100th birthday of Anna Kosha. Whereas is the intention of Conshohocken Borough Council and the mayor to focus attention on noteworthy occasions and individuals. Today, friends and family have gathered to honor and celebrate Conshohocken Borough resident Anna Kosha as she turns 100 years old. And whereas Anna Kosian Kosha has been living in Conshohocken her entire life. She was born after the most recent Matson Ford Bridge was opened and is the last surviving sibling of 10. And whereas, in her younger day, Anna worked as a seamstress for Gordons of Philadelphia. And whereas, Anna can be found playing bingo at the Conshohocken Community Center on Mondays, or out in her garden on a nice day. And whereas, Anna enjoys baking and hosting a weekly card game with friends and family. And whereas, Anna credits her life, her long life, to two glasses of wine a day." And may I add, I believe you make your own wine?
No.
Oh, she used to. Not anymore. Now, therefore, the Borough of Conshohocken recognizes and honors Anna Kosha for her long life and prosperity and wishes her many more. Be it proclaimed on this sixth day of April of the year 2022.
The first item listed is the SEPTA parking garage presentation. Mr. Gill and Ms. Bellotti? Bellotti? Mr. Bellotti. Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's going to be hard.
I'm Michael Gill.
Sorry, that's Michael Gill.
I'm outside counsel for SEPTA, but Mr. Bellotti, go ahead and make the presentation.
Thank you.
It's going to be hard to follow that, but we'll see what we can do.
Extremely.
My name's Chris Bellotti. I'm with McCormick Taylor, presenting the SEPTA Conshohocken Phase II parking improvements. This is an overview of the existing project area with the existing Conshohocken station right over here. Currently, the Phase 1 project is underway. That includes a surface lot and access road, some improvements to the station, and a railroad crossing at Oak Street. That is outlined in this light blue there, sorry. And then in dark blue here is the Phase 2 garage and surface lot, which we're going to be talking about tonight. So first is the project scope and the purpose and need. So the Phase 1, I mentioned, includes the relocation of the existing Conshohocken rail station with ADA improvements and a grade crossing at Oak Street. Phase 2, the garage location was selected to coincide with the objectives of the PennDOT I-76 congestion management project. PennDOT is constantly looking to get commuters off of 76 and into Center City, Philadelphia a different way, and this parking garage assists in that objectives. And to maximize, we're going to be maximizing the parking on the NEVI site to coincide with those Phase 1 improvements that's currently ongoing. So the site design for the Phase 2 is a three-tiered parking garage with the ability to add two parking levels in the future. All our design is not going to preclude adding those two levels. It's not going to construct the project right now. Right now, it's just a three-tier parking garage, as well as an adjacent surface lot. Mentioned that, this is a rendering of the parking garage. It's three tiers. We'll have two ground-level elevators serving all three parking tiers. We will have the infrastructure for EV charging spaces to be installed in the future. We're getting all the power and infrastructure there to accommodate that in the future, and we have the capacity to accommodate 2% of parking spaces, which exceeds the LED recommendation of 1%. We also will have ADA accessible parking. We will have all sensitive electrical and mechanical equipment that's going to be installed on the second tier of the parking level for protection from the 100-year flood levels. The parking garage is designed for the flood, to flood, to go through the garage at a 100-year storm. That's why we're putting all the important equipment on the second floor, and we will be flood-proofing any of the office space on the first floor. This is a picture of the overall improvements. In red is where the parking garage is. Vehicles will be accessing it through the access road that's currently already constructed from the Matson Mill property and the Phase 1 development. And then vehicles will have the opportunity either to turn left into the garage or continue straight into the surface lot. The surface lot consists of 191 spaces. The parking garage has 343 spaces, so it's a total of 534 parking spaces. The parking spaces are eight and a half by 18, two-way traffic with 24-foot lanes. We will be having eight-to-10-foot sidewalks along the track there for pedestrians to get to the station. And we will have a multi-use path on the Schuylkill Riverbank side that will connect into the proposed multi-use path that is going in with the adjacent residential development. And the path will connect into the sidewalk here as it wraps around the surface lot. We also have a fire lane here. We coordinated with the fire department early on in the design to make sure that that was accessible to them and fit all their needs. And then we have stormwater management facilities, a rain garden in the middle infield here, as well as a basin on the west end of the project to fill the stormwater management needs. And we have some landscaping also involved in the project. We have ADA accessibility at three locations, crossing the road, and there to the left of the garage, in the middle of the garage, and then one towards the station to cross pedestrians safely, as well as ADA accessible. We will have ADA surface lots, spots in this area, and also on the second floor of the garage. And the second floors, again, to get them off of the flood plane. Here's a rendering of what the garage will look like. The facade material is a pigmented precast concrete at the body of the parking structure. The entry tower will have a parking-level curtain wall system and a pigmented precast concrete with thin brick cast via form liner. Here's an updated rendering of the color scheme that was selected for the facade. It's a dark denim. And then we also have a rendering of the lobby and the stairwell there as well. And then some of the safety and security measures for the garage. We have a dry standpipe for fire-life safety. It's located at each stair tower. We have a fire alarm provided for emergency function of the elevator, and smoke detectors in the elevator lobby. We will have security cameras throughout each parking level, on the building exterior and within the surface parking lot, emergency call boxes, as well as revenue control and pay stations. There'll be different type of revenue for the garage lot versus a surface lot. The surface lot would be a pay-by-foot type system. And that concludes the presentation. If anybody has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Just a quick question. The parking, is it the similar as Spring Mill? They've dropped the coins in for each of their parking spots down there? Or is it going to be?
It won't be the slots. It's going to be...
Where somehow, it'll be paid spots?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Regarding the security cameras, will you have them also in the stairwell? Is that what's included in building, within the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have them. Correct.
Does that also include smoke alarms other than just the lobbies? Or is there a specific reason why they're just in the lobbies?
Yeah, they can't put smoke detectors. There's no way to put smoke detectors outside. So you have to stay in the lobby area because if you put them outside, they won't work as they need to.
But the stairwells are...
Yes, it will happen. It's right.
Yeah, yeah, the stairwells as well.
Okay.
Not in the garage, yeah.
Yes, that's my question.
Yeah, correct.
Sure.
Anyone else on council have a question? Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Glad to know you're here.
I do have one question, sorry. Just with the security cameras, are they monitored 24/7? And where is that being monitored?
They'll be sent downtown to our head offices, SEPTA's offices, so they will be monitored. They may not necessarily have a screen up at all times, but they'll have the capabilities if they wish to, if they wish to look at it, if they can. I believe we store all the video.
Data.
And then if something happens that somebody sees, is that a SEPTA police officer that takes care of the stuff in the garage? Or is that where you collaborate with the Conshohocken Police Department?
We would, if you guys needed help with that, I mean, if your department needs help, you reach out to us. We'd be more than happy to help you with that. So it would be our, our police and your police could work that out.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming in this evening. Thanks for the presentation.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a petition to vacate a portion of Corson Street. Mr. Peters, I will turn that over to you this evening.
Thank you, President Leonard. If we could go on the record, please. This is the scheduled, are you there? This is the scheduled date and time for a hearing on petition of 400 West Elm LLC to vacate a portion of Corson Street, as set forth in an amended petition that was submitted to the borough, and also the ordinance affecting the vacation. Exhibits for the borough are E1, the amended petition to vacate a portion of Corson Street, received from 400 West Elm LLC through their attorneys, with exhibits A, B, and C attached there, too. Exhibit B2 is an ordinance that Borough Council would adopt if it granted the petition to vacate a portion of Corson Street, and that has exhibits A and exhibit B. Exhibit B3 is proof of publication of this hearing. The hearing was advertised in the Times Herald, in the Times Herald Digital on March 22, 2022, and March 29, 2022. You're all familiar with this project. It's the project, a residential project, proposed for 400 West Elm Street. There is an area of Corson Street that's currently at issue. It's approximately 2,691 square feet. It's located between West Elm Street and the Schuylkill River Trail. On the plan that Borough Council already approved, that area is shown as providing access to the proposed parking area for the multifamily apartment building, again, consistent with the plans you already approved. The amended petition states that 400 West Elm LLC is the sole owner of the land abutting this area of Corson Street, and so the petition alleges there are no other interested parties. The area to be vacated, in addition to the general description I just gave you, is more particularly described in the meets and bound description attached to the amended petition as exhibit A, and the plan attached to the amended petition as exhibit B. With that, council for the applicant, as well as representative for the applicant or petitioner are here. Are there any questions from Borough Council on this petition?
No, thank you.
And seeing none, are there any questions from the general public with respect to this petition to vacate? With that, anything from you guys? You're good? With that, we will continue this matter to Borough Council's April 20, 2022, meeting for a vote. That meeting will take place here in this room at 7:00 PM on that date at 400 Fayette Street, Conshohocken, PA 19428. And that closes that hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on zoning ordinance amendments. Zoning ordinance amendment to remove residential uses in the SP zoning districts. I will again turn this over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you again, President Leonard. If we could go on the record for this hearing, this is the scheduled date and time for a hearing pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code for an ordinance titled "An Ordinance of the Borough of Conshohocken, Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Amending the Code of Ordinance of the Borough of Conshohocken," Chapter 27, Zoning, Part 15, SP-1 and SP-2, Specially Planned Districts 1 and 2; Part 16, SP-3, Specially Planned District 3; and Part 22, SP-4, Specially Planned District 4, to remove residential uses from those SP districts, repealing prior inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing a severability clause and setting an effective date. Borough exhibits for this hearing are Exhibit B1, "The Ordinance Under Consideration," which contains my attestation thereto when I sent it to the Montgomery County Law Library. It was timestamped by the Law Library on March 22, 2022. Exhibit B2 is the report from the Borough of Conshohocken Planning Commission dated March 10, 2022. Exhibit B3 is a report from the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated March 7, 2022. Exhibit B4 is the proof of publication for this hearing. The hearing and the ordinance under consideration were advertised in the Times Herald and Times Herald Digital on March 22, 2022, and March 29, 2022. Exhibit B5 is a presentation titled "Major Project Development," which was presented by Ray Sekulowski, the Borough's Executive Director of Operations, Emergency Management Coordinator, and Building Code Official at Borough Council's February 2, 2022, meeting. And Exhibit B6 are the meeting minutes from that February 2, 2022, meeting where the emergency management presentation was presented. For purposes of summarizing the ordinance, although the current zoning ordinance speaks for itself, under current zoning, residential uses are permitted under the regulations at Part 15, which is the SP1 and SP2 regulations, Part 16, which is the SP3 regulations, and Part 22, which is the SP4 regulations. Under those regulations, residential use was permitted under the SP1 and SP2 regulations subject to the requirements of a Section 27-1511 of the zoning ordinance, and that did require the property to be in the SP1 district for residential use to be allowed. Under the current regulations, residential use was permitted under the SP3 regulation as a conditional use. And in the SP4 district, residential use was permitted as part of a unified development as that term was defined in the ordinance. Under this proposed amendment, the amendment removes the reference to residential uses from the Declaration of Legislative Intent for the SP1 and SP2 district. That's at Section 27-1501. The amendment removes residential uses from the uses permitted under the SP1 and SP2 district regulations as Section 27-1502. The amendment removes the dimensional and design standards related to residential use in the SP1 and SP2 district regulations at 27-1511. The amendment removes the reference to residential uses from the Declaration of Legislative Intent for the SP3 district. That's 27-1601. For the SP3 district, it removes residential uses from the permitted uses under Section And with respect to SP3, it removes residential uses from the uses permitted by conditional use at 27-1603. Because the residential uses would be removed as a conditional use, it also removes the conditional use standards at 27-1604. And with respect to the SP4 district, it removes residential uses as permitted as part of a unified development under Section 27-2202. And it also removes residential uses from the parking regulations applicable in the SP4 district at 27-2206. Just some brief background on where this ordinance came from. As council is aware, on February 22, or February 2, 2022, you were given a presentation that was several months in the workings related to emergency management within the borough, and it also outlined development in the borough, current, existing, and future. At that meeting, Police Chief Metz, Fire Chief, Fire Marshal Gunning, and Battalion Chief Young, as well as Mr. Sekulowski, presented information to Borough Council outlining that residential development from an emergency management perspective. Those folks explained to you the outlook of the borough from an emergency management perspective, again, assuming that those already approved developments were completed. There was a presentation presented, which is now Exhibit B5, to this hearing. At Slide 1 of B5, Mr. Sekulowski broke down the borough into a lower end, which was from the south side of Elm Street down to the river, and the upper end, which was from the north side of Elm Street and up the hill. As you know, that area is the general area of these districts, the SP districts that we're talking about. Ray then walked you through the current and future development occurring in the borough and gave you specific numbers with respect to the outlook of the borough. That included new residential units in the lower end of 1,535 units. It included new residents in that area, assuming double occupancy of 3,070. It estimated that the current population in that area was 2,146, so with some quick math, that would result in 5,216 residents on the lower end of town. Looking at the upper end, Ray estimated about 110 additional residents, moving that population from 7,115 to 7,225. And adding all those up, that would result in a future population of 12,441 persons, an increase of 34% or 3,180 from the estimated current 9,261 residents. Mr. Sekulowski, Chief Metz, Mr. Gunning, and Mr. Young then walked you through what they're doing in terms of preparing the borough for that increase in population. As you know, on your agenda this evening, you have approval of a purchase of a new pumper truck for the fire department. Based on all of that, Borough Administration has reached the conclusion that residential occupancy in that area of the borough has been maximized from an emergency management perspective and then from a planning perspective. Both your planning commission and the Montgomery County Planning Commission reviewed the ordinance and ultimately recommended approval. Those SP districts served, or allowing residential uses in those districts served a purpose. Obviously, the areas were developed. There are other zoning districts within the borough that council should be aware of that do allow for multifamily use. The Montgomery County Planning Commission asked us, as the borough, to take a look at those other districts, which we will do, to make sure that we are properly addressing those districts. So with that background, are there any questions or comments from Borough Council?
There are no questions this evening, Mr. Peters. Thank you from council.
Very good. I know you heard the presentation the same time I did, so I understand that. Any questions or comments from the general public? We're just holding to make sure no one in the overflow room has any comments. There are no comments from the overflow room either. With that, this matter will be continued to Borough Council's April 20, 2022, meeting at 7:00 PM here in this room at 400 Fayette Street, Conshohocken, PA 19428, at which time Borough Council will consider a vote on the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is zoning ordinance amendment to...
Man? Yeah.
One more. I'll start over.
This one's much shorter, don't worry.
Last one.
We ready to roll?
Yes.
This is the scheduled date and time for a hearing pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code for an ordinance titled "An Ordinance of the Borough of Conshohocken, Montgomery County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Amending the Borough of Conshohocken Zoning Ordinance of 2001 by changing the required notice requirements and procedures of the ordinance with respect to hearings under the ordinance, amending the provisions related to expiration of zoning variances and special exceptions, and adding an expiration period for conditional uses, confirming that certain provisions of Part 12 R-O residential office district are no longer of any force or other effect, and then containing the general repealer clauses, severability clauses, and providing an effective date. The Borough's exhibits, Exhibit B1 is the ordinance under consideration with my attestation to the Montgomery County Law Library, timestamped by the Law Library on March 22, 2022. Exhibit B2 is the report from the Borough of Conshohocken Planning Commission dated March 10, 2022. Exhibit B3 is the report from the Montgomery County Planning Commission dated March 7, 2022. And Exhibit B4 is the proof of publication of this hearing and the ordinance under consideration. They were advertised in the Times Herald and Times Herald Digital on March 22, 2022, and March 29, 2022. As we discussed with Borough Council previously, under the current zoning regulations for zoning hearings, for zoning hearings, for variances, conditional uses, special exceptions, notice must be given to property owners within 500 feet of the property. The current ordinance contemplates that the information for those notices will be provided by the applicant. This results in notices going to individuals living more than a block away. And February 2022, it resulted in approximately 1,000 hard copy notices going out from the borough. Also, under the current ordinance, there is an expiration period for approvals, and specifically zoning variances and special exceptions, of six months, which often results in applicants coming back before the zoning hearing board to request extensions, and that creates unnecessary items on the zoning hearing board's agenda. How it works currently with respect to the notices, to go back to that, because the information received from the applicant has proved inaccurate, Borough staff ends up double-checking all the information, then corrects it, and then sends out the notices. So part of what I'm going to explain in terms of the proposed amendment is just making it match what the borough actually does. So under the amendment, it would be reduced, the notice would be reduced to property owners within 250 feet of a subject property. That's approximately a borough block. Please keep in mind that the property would still be posted, the hearing would still be advertised in the newspaper, and as you know, the borough also makes good use of its website and social media. The borough would be tasked with compiling the information and sending the notices, which it does now, but we're just codifying that, and the cost would be borne by the applicant. The ordinance then sets the expiration date for zoning relief, including variances, special exceptions, and conditional uses at one year. exceptions, and conditional uses at one year instead of the six months it was previously. And finally, the ordinance clarifies that section twenty-seven dash one two zero two point five of the zoning ordinance, which relates to the residential office district, has been invalidated by a court and therefore will be removed from the codification. With that explanations, I'll take any count any questions from Borough Council.
Anyone in council have any questions? There are no questions on this item this evening, Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. Are there any questions or comments from the general public?
Please. Phil Candelore.
Say your name again.
Phil Candle Candelore. Excuse me?
Spell your S D.
Sure. C A N D E L O R E.
And then please give your address, just for the record.
Sure. Four thirty-one East Eleventh Avenue. What is why are we considering lowering the notice time or who to be notified for?
Yeah, good, good question. So what we're doing is the five hundred square, whatever it was, five hundred feet was huge for a borough. It's not it's not consistent with what other municipalities are doing. And what's happened is, as I said, for the February meeting, we sent out one thousand notices, which is which is extreme and is taking up a significant amount of staff time. So the goal is to reduce it down to two hundred and fifty feet and then instead to focus that staff time on fielding questions or pushing it out through social media that people actually use.
So when you say it's a borough block, is it both sides of the like if I'm on the east side and I'm in my house and I want to do something, does that notice have to go just from my side of the street or?
It would end up going on the other side too. Good question.
Okay. That's that's it.
Yeah, it we're just bringing it more in line with with the realities of the borough. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Any other questions or comments from the public? And we'll note that there's nothing from the overflow room. With that, this matter will be continued to Borough Council's April twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting at seven o'clock PM. That meeting is to take place in this room at four hundred Fayette Street, Conshohocken, PA, one nine four two eight. And at that time, Borough Council will consider voting on the ordinance. And with that, we can close out this hearing, and I think we're done, so we'll thank our court reporter as well.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearing on waivers of off-street parking. Mr. Johnson, if you could come up, please? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so this next part is some good news for the borough. We have four new businesses that are looking to come into the downtown district, and a few of them will be filling in, will have been vacant for a little bit. Now, as you're aware, any use in the borough is required to have off-street parking. However, recognizing that the downtown district has many properties that just do not have the ability to provide off-street parking, and we have other amenities, the ordinance allows counsel or allows an applicant to ask counsel for a waiver from off-street parking. All four of these properties that will be coming up, there are no other outstanding zoning issues, so this is just your opportunity for them to seek the waiver. So with that, I guess we'll just.
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, Eric.
Hi. We are seeking a parking waiver for two oh seven Forest Street. We're planning on putting a golf simulator club there. We're starting out with three, so at the most, we would have eighteen people at a time. It's going to be by reservation only, and that is our lot up there. We have ten tenants that take up ten spots, and there's a total of twenty spots on the lot. So we have ten spots that we can dedicate to the golf simulator club. And then also along Forest Street, those are garages there, but they're not being used, so that could be additional parking as well. So that's an additional five spots right there. So.
Those garage.
Go ahead, I was just gonna ask.
Those garages, are they like entrances to garages even though they're not in use?
This used to be an auto body shop, so we're still going to keep the garage doors so we can open them up and have it be fresh air.
Oh, but it's your garage door?
Yeah. It's yeah, it's mine, yeah.
Laurie, can you just tell us a little bit about the business?
So it's going to be the simulators, the golf simulators. They're basically machines, and at most, it would be six people playing on each machine at a time. It's just a game of golf on a machine.
So it's a golf game? It's not just hitting a ball into the air for practice for swinging?
Well, you do hit a ball in the air, but it goes up against a screen within within the garage.
So on the screen, you actually see like the greens and the whole?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And Laurie, this is exclusively just for that event? There isn't any food?
No, 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 there's gonna be. So the simulators are going to be in the back where you see the number one, number two, and number three. That's where the simulators will be. And then in the front, we're just gonna have like a lounge area, maybe put lockers in there that members can leave their golf clubs or, you know, maybe a vending machine in there, but no, no food or unless they bring their own, so.
Okay.
What are your hours?
Well, we're hoping to do eight AM to ten PM. Right, well, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, then during the week, probably close by eight. Because we do have tenants there and we and we want something that's low volume, because we own the apartments there too. So we don't want to disrupt the tenants there.
Laurie, I'm sorry, I was recovering from those hearings. I have a question. How many how many on or off-street parking spots? I know you said it, I just missed it. Is it is it ten? Is it five? How many will you have for this one?
For this one?
For the simulator, yeah.
Well, ten of those are for the tenants. There's a total of twenty.
Okay.
So ten would be for the simulator.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Do members actually, forgive me, because I don't know, do they actually play against each other?
They can.
Regular rounds of golf?
Yeah, they can.
Okay. Just a curious question.
They're pretty sophisticated machines.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah.
And very serious members, I'm sure.
Yeah.
It's golf.
I love that it's an activity for the boroughs.
Yeah.
What's the expected time for a round of golf?
They say about an hour and a half.
Okay. Really? That's short.
Yeah, for two people. I think for four people, you allot about two and a half hours.
I'm so used to the four-hour walk that.
Well, you don't have to walk anywhere.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation, Laurie. We appreciate you coming in this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next is Alisa Yakely? Close? For three oh eight Fayette Street or Daily Bagel? Good evening. If you could say that correctly for me, I would appreciate.
It's Alyssa Yakely?
Yakely.
This is my partner, Marielle Link.
Hi.
We're working to open a bagel shop at three oh eight Fayette Street, formerly the Fayette Street Grill. The bagel shop known as Our Daily Bagel is primarily a grab-and-go type restaurant. We only have nine total seats inside, and our business will consist of mostly online orders and pickups, self-serve coffee, takeaway, averaging less than ten minutes per visit. The hours of operation will be Wednesday through Sunday from seven AM till two PM, with employees arriving at six AM and remaining until three PM. On weekdays, the shop will be staffed with about three employees, while weekends will have approximately approximately five employees working. We're encouraging the employees to park along Forest Street behind the bagel shop as well as down the other side streets. This will leave spots in front of the shop on Fayette, as well as across the street in front of the PNC PNC Bank. Additional parking can also be found on West Third, West Fourth, and up Fayette Street. We do not anticipate there being a shortage of parking spaces as we have evaluated the working hours of other neighborhood businesses. During the weekday hours, PNC Bank will accommodate their patrons with our own private parking lot. Conshohocken Library does not open till noon on both Wednesday and Friday and ten AM on Thursday, well past the anticipated rush of our bagel store. Additional street parking will be available during the weekend as our neighbors, the dentist, Walter Phillips Esquire, CMC Engineering are closed this Saturday and Sunday. Kohl's Custom Framing, Conshohocken Library, and PNC Bank are also closed on Sunday. Parking will not be a concern on Monday and Tuesday as we will be closed. Additionally, Conshohocken is known as a walking town. Many of our anticipated customers will be local residents within walking distance. A number of our employees are also residents of the borough who are within walking distance. By our research and discussion with other businesses, we do not foresee a parking issue. In the past, our location was a forty-two-seat indoor dining facility, offering three to five course menus, accounting for much longer parking times and a much larger staff. We respectfully ask that Our Daily Bagel be granted for a waiver for off-street parking.
Anyone in council have any questions this evening?
Yes. I see that you're going to be getting your bagels from like another vendor.
Yes.
So I was wondering, do you have an idea of when your deliveries would be?
Five AM.
Will you have anything in addition to bagels?
Bagel sandwiches, like egg sandwiches.
Everything is.
Yeah.
Baked goods.
When are you opening?
Hopefully the end of the month.
You've had a couple of pop-ups. Anecdotally, did you notice any parking issues or mostly walkers?
Mostly walkers.
Mostly walkers. Yeah. I mean, it was pretty surprising to see people come out of nowhere, because I was expecting people to drive up, and people just walked from everywhere. And my sister, who lives at Twelfth and Wells, walked there with her dog, so she was, I mean, I didn't, I thought it was far, but I'm from Holland Bucks County, so you have to drive everywhere. So.
Yeah.
Not around here.
Is this the only bagel shop, or is do you have another one that's?
That this is it?
No, no, no.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
The next business is the Oyster House and Grill at one twenty-eight Fayette Street. Mr. Disson, if you could come up, please?
Hi, Peter Disson.
Good evening.
From the Fayette Street Oyster House and Grill. It's going to be about a seventy-seat restaurant, and we're going to be doing basically seafood, but we are going to be doing some prime steaks. Let's see, we do have an arrangement with Father Huron at the Saint Matthews Church for valet parking, and World Class Valet will be handling that. Flacos, we can use their lot, we have an arrangement with them. All day Sunday, Saturday after five PM, and Monday through five Friday after eight PM, so that would be late late customers. Of course, then we, you know, the sour west has a hundred and fifty spaces and fifteen hundred spaces off hours. So that's basically how we're going to handle that. You figure seventy seats, if you get ninety percent occupancy, meaning a three-top at a four-top table, so maybe we would have thirty cars every hour and a half, maybe fifty cars a day. And that's about it.
Anyone have any questions?
Do you have any other restaurants?
I have a restaurant in Philadelphia. It's for sale, if you'd like to take a peek. We could do it. And I did, I was the consultant for the restaurant on East Elm. That was the Isabella. That was about twelve years ago. So I was there only four months before we opened and four months after we opened. So I've been doing it all my life.
So are you going to be more than a consultant on this restaurant?
No, I own this restaurant, and this is my retirement. So, you know, I do know myself, and I know that sitting at home and watching TV is not for me, so what I'm going to do is work like I've done all my life.
A lot.
What's the name of this restaurant?
Stay Alive.
Oyster House?
Oyster House and Grill, is it?
Sounds good.
Do you have clam chowder?
Clam chowder, yeah, we do classical clam chowder, so we don't use a roux. We use potatoes to thicken. So, you know, some people, especially downtown, they would think it would be not as thick as they like because they're using used to using heavy roux, which is flour and butter. So ours is a little more traditional. Downtown, we didn't use bacon. We had a lot of people that didn't eat pork. We have yet to decide what we're going to do on that. But we do make a great lobster bisque also, using lobster bodies. And my chef from downtown is coming up here. He worked at the Palm for seventeen years. I went to Courant Blue in Paris, so I'm classically trained, but too old to do it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
The next business is ENJ Wax Studio at three twenty Fayette Street with Ashley Maldonado. Is that close enough?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi. So I plan to open ENJ Wax Studio right on three twenty Fayette. It's a full-body waxing service salon. It's just going to be me and one other person at a time, so. That's it.
That's plenty, right?
Yeah. So I really don't see like parking as an issue because it's my car and somebody else's car.
Right.
Yeah.
What are what are your hours usually?
So I haven't, like nine thirty to three or nine thirty to six on, yeah, and Tuesday through Saturday. I'll be closed Monday, Sunday, and Monday.
And I'm assuming that's appointment.
Yes.
Only at some point?
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
Pretty simple.
It's very cut and dry, very simple, so. Oh, not a good, never mind. Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
President Leonard, all four applicants will be back on the agenda for consideration for approval of the off-street parking waiver on April twentieth, and we'll respond to applicants the next day.
Thank you, Ms. Checo. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary final minor subdivision and land development for one twenty-four West First Avenue EELI LLC applicant. I will again turn this over to Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. This is a minor subdivision application to subdivide a property into two lots and improve those lots with single-family attached dwellings. The project already received certain required zoning relief, and Borough the Borough Planning Commission considered it at their last meeting and recommended approval with certain conditions. And with that, I will turn it over to Rob Cunningham, the applicant's engineer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm Rob Cunningham with Holmes Cunningham Engineering. I'm here with representatives of EELI, who's the applicant. As Mike has just said, we are taking an existing lot on West First Avenue that is contains a single attached home, demolishing the existing home and subdividing to create two new attached houses. The we were in front of the zoning hearing board late last year, received approval for some dimensional requirements. We're here this evening requesting a preliminary final approval for the project. We've received letters from all of your consultants. I'm happy to say that all of the items will comply. Most of them are administrative. We will work through all the minor technical items. There are three waivers that we will be requesting. Again, it's an infill lot. There are, you know, some things that are just a little more difficult, trying to meet the character of the neighborhood, minimize our impact, things like that. I can run through those if you'd like. One of those is grading within three three feet of the property line. Obviously, we're demolishing an attached dwelling, so to just do that demolition, we're going to be grading within three feet. Additionally, we are, as we construct the two new homes, our property line to the west Additionally, we are, as we construct the two new homes, our property line to the west, we will be doing some grading to install some stormwater management improvements. One of the conditions of the zoning hearing board was to install a stormwater management facility that helps mitigate the existing condition for our neighbor to the west, Ms. Bachelor, and we will be doing that. So that is one waiver. The other two waivers are just a function of where we are. One is a waiver from requiring street trees. There are no street trees on our side of West First Avenue. Based on where we're constructing the homes, we're obviously not really going to have the opportunity to install those. We will install the trees somewhere else on site, but obviously on the street, it just becomes very difficult based on the existing condition. The other item is from installing pedestrian lighting. We will have facade-mounted lighting like everybody else on our street, but we wouldn't, we're not looking to install a pole or anything like that. We're just trying to obviously maintain the character and minimize our impact. So those are the three waivers. Everything else was a will comply. I have Gilmore's letter, I have the zoning officer's letter, all of those items we are good with. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have anything.
I have a question. So the house that you're demolishing?
Mm-hmm.
Is against another home?
That is correct.
Will you be putting the new one against that other home?
That is correct, yeah.
And then attaching a third, for lack of a better?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the property goes all the way back to the alley?
That is correct.
Will there be garages?
Ah, arrows you said, there we go, perfect. Yes, we're installing two driveways and then a detached garage for each unit.
Okay.
So it would come off the alley. Everybody else has a similar situation, either it's a garage or paved spaces, and we would be consistent with that.
What is your height?
It is compliant with the zoning ordinance. I, yeah, and I think it's, I forget how it's calculated, but yes, that's, yeah. The, all the houses here are three, three-and-a-half stories, just because I think they all pitch into the hill. We're going to be a similar situation, basically burying the first floor so that you almost walk in on the second floor in the back.
You've talked with neighbors on both sides and?
Yes, yes. We've, we've met with both. Ms. Bachelor came to the zoning hearing, had some concerns with the zoning hearing board, applied a condition that we kind of worked to mitigate that. And we'll work with your engineer to make sure that it's satisfactory.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Any questions? Well, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Rob, they'll vote on it on April 20th.
Yes.
That's a thought, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda is a discussion on a stormwater management ordinance update and a stormwater amendment to the SADO. Ms. McNair, our borough engineer, if you could come up, please? Hello, Karen.
Hi, good evening. Here tonight to discuss the stormwater management ordinance update and amendment to the stormwater portion of your subdivision and land development ordinance. And the reason we're doing this now is it's actually a DEP requirement as part of your MS4 permit, that it has to be, the model stormwater management ordinance has to be adopted by September 30th. And we're recommending the SADO updates at the same time so that the two ordinances continue to work together. We started by comparing the model to the borough's current stormwater ordinance, which was last adopted in 2008. And what we found is the model is based on a typical Act 167 ordinance that's set in Pennsylvania, but the borough did not previously have this requirement, so there's a significant change to the format. But what we are doing is recommending changes to the model ordinance that incorporate borough-specific related requirements that aren't covered by the model. So that's mashing definitions that are in your zoning ordinance and your subdivision and land development ordinance, and then adding references to your subdivision and land development ordinance so the two continue to work together. The model actually permits exemptions from any of the ordinance's requirements up to an acre, but given the lot sizes of the borough, that wouldn't be appropriate here. So what we're recommending is that less than 600 square feet of impervious surface be exempt. And the reason we are recommending that amount is it will allow for single-family homes to put in a garage and a driveway access. And we're also recommending that between 600 square feet and 1,000 square feet can use a simplified method. So instead of having to go through calculations and hire an engineer, a homeowner could plant trees or use simple calculations that are included in the ordinance to create a rain garden or something like that. So again, the exemptions would help keep costs down for homeowners doing small projects, but anything over 1,000 square feet, any land development, would have to go through all of the ordinance requirements. And any exemption would still need to show that they're not having a negative impact on adjacent properties. So they couldn't put in roof drains for a garage, for example, and just put it right to their neighbor's property. They'd still have to show us they're not having a negative impact. So the concurrent updates to the subdivision and land development ordinance would be to the drainage section. They were adopted in 2005 and last amended in 2008. What we're recommending is adding current state-level guidance documents for stormwater management, erosion, and sediment controls. Right now, it's limited to basins, and this would add really more of the state-level, BMPs are permitted, so any facilities like a rain garden aren't covered by your current ordinance, and this would incorporate that as well. We also discussed with borough administration using a conservative approach for the rainfall data that is required by the ordinance. So instead of using the 50% data, we would be using 95% rainfall value. So it just provides additional protection for any larger storms that are coming through. And really, it's not adding that much additional rainfall for a one-year storm, a chance storm that would occur annually. It adds a quarter of an inch. For a 100-year storm, it would add two-thirds of an inch. So it shouldn't really be that large of an impact on developers, but it does add additional protection to the borough. So that concludes my summary of the ordinances, and I'd be happy to hear any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. McNair? I have none. So Karen, if you don't mind just staying at the podium. The next item on the agenda is the annual MS4 presentation from our borough engineer, Karen McNair. Just thank you again, Karen.
Thanks. So tying into that ordinance, the DEP asks that we give an annual update on your municipal separate storm sewer system permit. This permit authorizes the borough to discharge stormwater into surface water, so here that would be the Plymouth Creek and the Schuylkill River. The DEP considers storm sewer system to include roads, inlets, piping, but also swales, channels, and similar features. The permit requires reduction of discharge of pollutants to the maximum extent practical, but here pollutants means items like sediment, phosphorus, and nitrogen. And it also asks that you remove any hazardous connections like sanitary sewer or washing machines. But I'm happy to say, when the borough had their storm sewer televised in 2018 as part of the infrastructure plan, we didn't find any illegal connections. So any of those that were existing have been previously removed. So the way you can accomplish the discharge of pollutant reduction is by implementing the six minimum control measures that you can see on the slide there, and I'll just read those out for you. Public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction runoff control, and pollution prevention slash good housekeeping. And again, for this year, you have to adopt an ordinance that's consistent with the model ordinance that we just spoke about by September 30th. As part of this permit, the borough is also required to implement a pollution reduction plan for the Plymouth Creek, which roughly covers the western portion of the borough. This plan was approved by the DEP in 2020 and has to be implemented by the end of February of 2025. The plan is to construct an underground detention basin in Zuck Cliff Park. We have done survey and soil testing out there. We're currently moving forward with the design. That was part of the presentation we had given in 2020, but for those of you who don't recall and are newer to council, it would be on the eastern side of the park by Wood and West Ninth. Some ways the borough can actively address the permit requirements is me giving this presentation tonight. We do stormwater sampling at pipe-out flows, and we monitor construction activities for any sediment. You have a stormwater management page on your website. It's under the resources tab. You can go under stormwater management. That has a lot of helpful information and goes over these general permit requirements as well. We do include stormwater education articles in the newsletters that the borough publishes, and public involvement and activities is another way. And the EAC's biannual cleanups is a big help because any of that trash that they're picking up, it saves it from going into the rivers, and that's something that you can include in your permit each year. So again, that concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions about your permit.
I do not. Does anyone else on council have a question for Karen?
All right.
Well, thank you, Karen, again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is under council business. It is conducting interviews for board and commission vacancies. The first and only interview this evening is for Mary Kiernan to interview for the zoning hearing board and the planning commission. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, everyone. How are you today?
Good.
So Mary, I did, I did see that you are interviewing for both. You have interest in both the zoning hearing and planning. And I did read your letter to the borough. So on that note, what do you think is one of the biggest challenges for the borough in general?
In general?
Yes.
How much time do you have?
Five minutes.
I'll give you, I'll try and keep it to less than that. I've, I first, I grew up in northeast Philadelphia, and my first job out of college was in Conshohocken, and I didn't know what a Conshohocken was. Like, I lived in Philadelphia, but we didn't get, you know, SEPTA took us everywhere. We didn't know what the suburbs were. And I've lived here or right near here ever since. And when I first came here, I got my first apartment in Sherry Lake, and this was 25 years ago, almost, almost next month it will be exactly 25 years. And I signed up for what was Gold's Gym when they were opening?
Yes, in Plymouth Square.
In the shopping center, yep. And the woman outside, there was nothing in there, it was empty, and the woman outside was telling me, you're getting in at the right time, it's going to be the next maniac. And to a certain extent, she was correct, right? If you look around at everything that we have become in the last 25 years from what we were back then, we really have developed into this amazing community, full of a really diverse population, right? Young families, older residents who've been here for 100 years, right? Which we saw tonight, as well as, you know, this influx of, you know, young people that are coming in all of the time. And I really do think that we have an opportunity ahead of us to really decide that we don't want to be maniac, we want to be Conshohocken, right? And we have a very unique set of, I think, logistical opportunities, right? We've got this beautiful river, we've got this amazing sort of downtown Main Street sort of feel, but we also have all of these amazing properties, homes for people to live in and communities for us to grow. We have parks, we have schools, we have an amazing school district. We want to make sure that we're attracting the right family kind of environment, as well as young people, not just for now, but into the future. And we want to make sure that we're doing it sustainably and in a way that supports who already lives here, as well as the people that we want to retain as residents going forward into the future to keep this place what it can be. And I really think we have so much, we have done so much, but there is so much more that we can do. There are, I think, amazing opportunities for the walkability of Fayette Street, going all the way further up into the, into our community. We really probably could do what I think is maybe a more strategic planning sort of view at some of these opportunities that we see presented here, some of the parking facilities, some of the condominiums and things like that, and what are we doing to build up the communities around them or further north in the community, or further east or further west? I'm just, I think, I've seen so much with this community over the years. We've done such an amazing job, and I think we can do a lot more going forward.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question for Mary?
Oh, come on.
Have you attended any of the meetings for the zoning commission or zoning?
I have, I have, and I can tell you that I was, I wasn't really expecting something like this because most of the meetings I've attended have been over Zoom over the last couple of years, so it's been like a little bit different in terms of feel. But I have attended some of the zoning commissions as well as some of these council meetings.
Does anyone else on council have a question for Mary? Well, thank you for coming in this evening, Mary, and thank you for your interest.
Have a good night.
Good evening, thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider appointing applicants to the EAC. I will turn this over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. We have been interviewing applicants for vacancies on all of our boards and commissions. At this time, we have three individuals who have indicated interest and who have interviewed for the EAC. They are Bob Maloney, Justin Clayfee, Diane Piccon. If you are inclined, the recommendation would be to appoint those three individuals to the EAC. That would then fill and complete any open vacancies. The EAC would then be moving on and conducting business. We just met with the chair and the vice chair this week. They have a lot of exciting initiatives planned, and so I think it would be prudent to make that motion this evening. So they can move along.
So if council is so inclined this evening, the motion would be to appoint Bob Maloney, Justin Clayfee, and Diane Piccon to the EAC.
I'll make that motion. You have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is discussion on the CPW Rotary Club Special Event Application for Use of the A Field for the Conshohocken Beer Festival. Mr. Tarry, Joe Robinson, and Emily Zabrowski, if you could come up, please? Good evening.
Good evening, council. Yeah, so we are here to ask, we have submitted a special event application for use of the A Field, and this is for the Conshohocken Beer Festival, which we've held six times so far. Most times have been at the A Field as well, and the event has generally been lauded as a success and seems to have become a beloved, beloved event in the community.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody have any questions on the event in the past or?
Does anyone on council have any questions?
Are you looking at changing anything from what you've done in the past?
The last few years, we have had to change our layout due to the field. We try to keep everybody off the field, and it's usually been cordoned off, and we always go off of a borough, especially raise recommendations on where we, where we should set up. Our plans are usually approved a few weeks, if not months, ahead of time. We always meet with borough council, or not borough, I'm sorry, not borough council, but borough representatives, including police, fire chiefs, and managers before and after the event to go over any issues there's been. There hasn't seemed to be any issues in the past. So, yeah, we're always looking for recommendations on how to make it better, but we would like to continue with it.
Do you have any concerns that since there was a hiatus and everybody is ready to get back to normal life, that it would, it's going to be even more people this year?
Well, I mean, we have, we sell tickets, it's all ticketed, and it's a, you know, the idea of having it in the field there, being a fenced-in field, that is our ideal location. If we aren't able to hold it there, we would definitely have to change the type of event that we have, which is what we did last year. We had a virtual beer event, which was also successful, obviously not as successful as in the past, but the money that we've raised through the Beer Fest has come, a large portion of it directly back to the community, very much directly as far as that day, as soon as the event's over, most of the restaurants and bars do fill up, and as well as afterwards, the money that is raised is brought, you know, we've done a lot of things for the Conshohocken, Plymouth, and White Marsh community, as well as international with the money that we raised, so.
So you'll cap tickets at 2,500 tickets?
Oh, i- in all likelihood, I mean, we, the highest we've ever sold was 2,500. Uh, the years, the, I'd say the two years maybe leading up to the, when we got, you know, shut down for COVID, um, it was actually significantly lower. I don't even think we hit the 2,000 mark.
It's around 1,900.
For the, even the two years leading up to that. Um, I don't anticipate even probably that amount. Um, given we changed the layout of the field, I think it was for the two years leading up to that. Um, 2,500 for this point, I mean, I, I wouldn't think that we would even attempt to sell that amount of tickets for the first time back. But it's all going to also be dependent on where the COVID restrictions are and what the approvals are of, of our county and obviously, you know, Conshohocken.
Thank you.
I think uh, one additional thing I'd throw in there is we're happy to hear recommendations um, from the borough as far as um, capacity concerns.
I think too, one additional thing is that in the past, we've had um, again, from borough representatives, um, about permits that, like different approvals that we need from fire marshals for food trucks. We've accommodated all of that with inspections, waivers for volunteers, all of those things. So we have no problem getting our volunteers and any other vendors or anything to do anything that the borough requires, so.
So I understand that the volunteers and the attendees love this. I'm wondering, have you ever polled like the people who live around the A Field? What their thoughts on having this event are?
We have not done that. Um, we're not aware of any complaints that people have directly filed towards us. Um, one of the things that we have made sure that we do a good job of is if there's any trash outside the A Field that we go through and we even throughout the event have volunteers go out and scope through that area, clean up any trash. And then afterwards, after the event, make sure that we do the same thing. We go around and make sure we're picking up trash that might be on people's properties. Um, but in terms of how the neighbors in that area feel about the event, we haven't pulled them directly.
How far does that trash pickup radius extend?
Um, we usually do like at least the block around in all directions.
Have you ever gone to Plymouth meeting to ask if they have anywhere to hold this?
We have held it in the past at the uh, the proving grounds, but that was actually before their expansion. So it wouldn't, that location wouldn't be uh, available. Um, but to answer Adrian's question as well, I mean, we, we also meet with all, like including the fire chief and the uh, uh, police department to go over if there was any concerns that were brought up or any incidents that happened as a result of the event. And nothing has ever been brought to our attention.
Thank you. Does anyone else on council have any questions?
Uh, I do. Um, you guys bring in a significant amount of revenue through this event. Uh, how much of that is allocated into Conshohocken? Can you give me specifics on where that money has gone to the Conshohocken Borough?
Yeah, so that's a great question. Um, there isn't a specific amount that's allocated um, from the funds that we raise, but a lot of it does go back into our local communities. Um, a really great uh, example of this is when the flooding happened. Um, we were able to work with the CNC directly for any victims that were, or any, um, any people who are affected by the flood. Um, and, and donate what they needed um, based on CNC recommendations. Um, and that's, that's all because we're able to do fundraising events like this in the borough.
Also been able to actually CNC, the building itself, we've been able to donate revenue, I believe, to help with the roof and a couple other renovation projects to the actual structure. As well as other, you know, events that they hold. We do donate quite a bit. Uh, Colonial, I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry, Conshohocken Elementary, we also do donations with them. Um, again, this is off the top of my head. I'm sure we have documentation and paperwork as far as that's concerned, but um, give me another couple of minutes, I might think of something else.
Apologies, our treasurer isn't here tonight.
So this is on our border with White Marsh. So I'm wondering, is there any coordination that goes on with that township? Um, we have a close rec- uh, uh, relationship with White Marsh Township as well. Actually, we have an event with them this coming Saturday at the Well Street Open Space where we're helping to, to build the uh, uh, hiking trails over there. But we've worked with uh, Tom Bloomstrom in the past, uh, trying to coordinate how to help our, so we cover Conshohocken, Plymouth and White Marsh as part of our, you know, area for the Rotary Club. And uh, we have worked with them in the past, but for this specific event, we haven't because it is all borough property as far as my understanding is. Uh, I didn't realize that the A Field was uh, shared. No, not that it's shared, but the attendees, when looking for parking, whenever coming in or going out, could be going through either of our borough or township. Attendees, actually, that's one of the lures, or the allures of having it in Conshohocken. We, we run shuttle buses. So uh, we pick people up mostly on the waterfront of the apartments and bring them up and we bring them back to their homes as well. That's definitely the biggest upside to having this type of event. There's not many Beer Fest that have that opportunity. Um, most other Beer Fest people have to drive home or have a designated driver. Obviously, you have Lyft and those sorts of things these days, but we have, I'd say the largest portion of our attendees are taking buses. And we check them in directly off the buses, including their IDs. Police are, are at the doors with us as we, as they come and they go.
How many vendors do you average at this event?
Uh, beer vendors or food vendors?
Beer vendors.
Vendors, I, in the past, I believe it was around 50.
And do the attendees have any limitation on how much they're allowed to drink in the course of the time that they're there?
We have small cups, first of all. The limitation is the amount of attendees in the lines that they have to stand in. But uh, they also do, will be flagged and they, they will be asked to leave. I've actually, unfortunately, it was in the, the time we were in Plymouth, the only incident that we had when we were in Plymouth Township. Um, I did have to escort somebody out. The police were behind me and when the situation escalated, they did take care of it. But there's only been one incident that we had to escort somebody out. But it is closely monitored. We have our, we have a private security firm as well as the police department in Conshohocken. And I believe they are in contact with the surrounding police departments as well dur- during that day.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in this evening. Is there any public comment on this agenda item this evening? No public comment?
If anybody in the overflow room still? Okay.
Okay. With no, thank you, thank you guys. With no public comment, if council so desires, I would be calling for a motion to deny, deny the CPW Rotary's request to utilize the A Field for the Conshohocken Beer Festival for 2022, 23, and 24.
I'll make that motion.
Wait, I'm sorry, you're saying to deny?
Yes. And Adrian made a motion and do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is manager matters, which I will turn over to Ms. Checo.
The first item on, under manager matters is to consider approving 239 301 West Fourth Avenue a maintenance bond release. The project is complete. Um, the 18-month maintenance bond period for the project ends in April of 2022. Our engineer has performed a site inspection of the public improvements and is recommending release of the maintenance bond in the amount of $7,202.25. If so inclined, I would need a motion to approve that release.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
As previously discussed, due to global supply chain issues and inflation, the cost of capital projects earmarked for the 2022 capital budget have significantly increased from when those same projects were approved in 2021 during our budget cycle. We are working off of a 30% price increase in most areas. Unfortunately, um, we will be presenting any applicable projects to council for supplemental appropriation approval on a quarterly basis. Increased costs will be covered through capital reserves or park and rec impact funds. This evening in front of you is Resolution 202209, which if approved, would approve those supplemental appropriations to the 2022 budget. The projects in question are the Community Center Front Door Replacement Project, which is looking at a $3,110 increase, which is roughly 18.8%. The Public Meeting Room, and that will be coming out of the Park and Rec Impact Fee Fund. The Public Meeting Room AV Equipment Update Project is looking at a roughly $9,648.50 increase, which is roughly 24%. That will be coming from Capital Reserve Fund. And the Mastick Patcher Purchase, um, which is approximately a $9,002.09 increase, roughly 16.36%, again, coming from Capital Reserve. In total, that is a $21,760.59 increase captured in the resolution in front of you, which also indicates the funds that the money is being, is being supplemented from and going to. Um, if so inclined, again, the motion would be to approve Resolution 202209, which would approve the supplemental appropriations to the 2022 budget.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
As you are aware, we had a sinkhole on Poplar Street. Um, that started as basically a 10-square-foot sinkhole in size. It then, this, then resulted in a stormpipe failure, um, which heaved portions of the road, roughly 70 to 80 feet downhill. Um, again, we're looking at global pricing issues where the approved project that was done under emergency situations due to the nature of the repair um, was priced in October. Um, we have now finally received the piping. Um, and that price has significantly increased. Uh, so you are looking at change order number one captured in Resolution 202210 for the amount of $4,809.91. Mr. Peters, do you have anything that needs to be added for that?
No, that's great.
Okay. If inclined, I guess I just would like to point out and use the opportunity to indicate that when we're talking about infrastructure, those numbers are very real. You're talking about a 10-square-foot sinkhole resulting in approximately $119,000 project. Once you start looking at infrastructure underneath the road.
Which is why it was $32 million.
Exactly, which is why when we did the infrastructure evaluation, it was $35 million four years ago. Um, so it will have significantly increased at this point. So again, I digress, but um, taking the opportunity to highlight that. But on, what is under consideration this evening is a motion to approve Resolution 202210, approving and ratifying change order number one for storm sewer repairs on Poplar Street in the amount of $4,809.91.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is a Pierce Enforcer Pumper for the Fire Department. Um, that again is captured in Resolution 202211, which was provided in your meeting packet. Uh, the, the purchase of this item will, is through Co-Stars, um, contract specifically. Uh, this is a need in the Fire Department. Um, this, the purchase will be utilized using CARES Act funding specifically. Uh, but for this evening, to get the ball rolling, what's in front of you is approval of Resolution 202211, which authorizes the purchase of a Pierce Enforcer Pumper.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The borough currently is under contract with EVB Towing Services. That relationship has been extremely positive, especially in light of some of the emergency situations that we've had to manage. Um, specifically Storm Ida comes to mind. Uh, under the current agreement, we have the ability to extend uh, by one year. So in front of you this evening is um, a draft of the extension letter that would extend the towing agreement with EVB Service Center for one year. Um, this will be on your agenda for consideration on the 20th. Are there any questions?
I was just curious, uh, could you give me just a little bit of detail about, I mean, their, their exceptional help during Hurricane Ida?
They were available 24/7. Um, Mr. Sokolowski, you can jump in if I misspeak at any point, but they were available 24/7. They made the borough of Conshohocken a priority. They answered every phone call. They diverted um, individuals that were working in other areas and focused on Conshohocken because of the relationship and the amount of business that we do together. The number of cars that were impacted by the water and the flooding was so significant that they had to find alternative ways to remove those vehicles and where to place them. They got creative and innovative when we needed them the most.
Thank you.
Is that a good summary? Okay. Again, so no vote this evening, but it will be on your agenda for the 20th. So if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to us and over the next two weeks. The next item, I don't think Mr. Keller is here, no. Um, David Keller, the owner of Conchi Corner Tavern, has requested um, approval to close Jones Street from Spring Mill Avenue to East Hector from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM on June 5th. Um, they will be hosting a Black Party fundraiser by doing a rib cooking contest to raise money for Howe Charities. Uh, this request um, has been reviewed by administration, the police department, the fire chief, the emergency management coordinator, the deputy emergency management coordinator. Um, they have found no concerns as it pertains to the request. We have received the special event application form from Mr. Keller. Um, he has provided the license agreement that will be used for Montgomery County as well as the Liquor Control Board that will allow um, extension onto the street. Um, if so inclined, um, the motion would be to approve Conchi Corner Tavern Special Event Application for fundraiser, Black Party on behalf of Howe Charities on June 5th from 1:00 to 7:00 PM, contingent on final review and approval by administration.
I'll make that motion.
I have questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Okay, questions, go ahead. Again, Mr. Keller is not here, so.
That's fine. Is the Howe Property Group working with them or are they just deciding to raise the money for their specific charities?
I don't know that answer.
How does it affect the bakery?
From my conversation with Mr. Keller, they are included in this. Um, they have, in his original email to me, the bakery was part of the overall conversation. But again, I can only go off of what was indicated to me in his email.
In that letter, it says he spoke with Tina about that.
Okay, thank you. And, and Nina, I believe this isn't the first event that Conchi Corner has.
They had another one too.
They've had a few and I don't think it's ever been an issue with the bakery, so.
Just checking on.
He did indicate, yes, that he spoke. It's in his request letter that came through.
Okay.
It specifically says that she and I will work together to make this orderly and a safe event.
Perfect. Any other questions?
I'll make that motion.
Is Howe, uh, Howe Charities, are they a 501(c)(3)?
I can't speak for Howe Properties or Howe Charities.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have under manager matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Checo. The next item on the agenda is legal matters. I am again going to turn it over to Mr. Peters.
Uh, thank you, President Leonard. The first item is consider approval, and it's not up for a vote tonight, but consider a resolution approving an amendment to the approval of preliminary and final subdivision land development for Matson Mill. As you'll recall, by Resolution 24 of 2019, you approved the project known as the Matson Mill Project. That project is well under construction. Um, as part of that project, at the same time, we were working with SEPTA on their new train station, which included a crossing at Oak Street. Um, when you approved the land development for Matson Mill, you anticipated that that project would need um, that crossing at Oak Street for purposes of access, including emergency access. So you required the developer at that time, if SEPTA did not complete the Oak Street Crossing, to post financial security before um, one of two events. One, before they got a use and occupancy permit. Or two, if SEPTA indicated that it no longer intended to perform the Oak Street crossings. Um, since that time, due to the global supply chain shortages, which we've discussed a few times tonight, there is certain equipment that SEPTA needs to complete the Oak Street Crossings. crossing that simply will not come in in time for the application by Matson Mill for a use and occupancy permit. So over the last few months, we've worked with SEPTA and the developer of Matson Mill to try to come to a resolution. SEPTA has guaranteed the borough that it does intend to do the work. There is a reason that it's far preferable that SEPTA does that work. Obviously, they are tracts that are controlled by SEPTA, and also the developer itself cannot do the work. It would need to fund the work as the borough contracted or otherwise performed the work. So a solution would be to keep the requirement in condition number thirteen, that they post financial security, but to move the date back to the date that SEPTA anticipates actually finalizing the Oak Street crossing. And if they don't do so by that date, we have a backup plan in place. Therefore, this amendment would push that date back to June 30th of 2023. But importantly, as part of those conversations, we have gotten Oak Street open to emergency access, so that concern is now no longer in play. And otherwise, there are no changes to the resolution. Again, it's not before you this evening for a vote, but I can answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone in council have a question for Mr. Peters? Are there any? No questions, Mr. Peters, thank you.
Great. The next item is consider approving an addendum for the agreement of sale for real estate property, specifically tax map parcel numbers, zero five dash zero zero dash zero three one zero zero dash zero zero dash nine, zero five dash zero zero dash one one eight two eight dash zero zero dash two, zero five dash zero zero dash zero four eight eight zero dash zero zero dash two, and zero five dash zero zero dash zero two one zero zero dash zero zero dash one. This is the property that you put under agreement of sale at your meeting a couple months ago. We have moved forward quickly in terms of closing and in terms of due diligence, but there are a few items that remain outstanding. You had, or under the agreement, there was a requirement that this project or the property close within thirty days. So what's before you is an addendum to the agreement of sale that would extend the closing out by a period of forty-five days. It also extends out the borough's due diligence for that same time period. And then this addendum makes clear that this property transaction is unrelated to other properties that this specific, not necessarily individual property owner, but that this specific family has in the borough. So with that, this is up for a vote this evening, President Leonard. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item this evening? So if council desires, I would be seeking a motion to approve an addendum to the agreement of sale for real estate property, specifically tax map parcel numbers, zero five dash zero zero dash zero three one zero zero dash zero zero dash nine, zero five dash zero zero dash one one eight two eight dash zero zero dash two, zero five dash zero zero dash oh four eight eight zero dash zero zero dash two, and zero five dash zero zero dash zero two one zero zero dash zero zero dash one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Peters, I'm going to send the next item to you also.
Thank you, President Leonard. This is consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Borough of Conshohocken and the Conshohocken Sewer Authority. Over the last, well, over a year now, we've been working with the Sewer Authority to establish a working relationship between the borough and the Sewer Authority moving forward. There are two documents this evening. The first is memorandum of understanding, and then I'm going to discuss with you a municipal services agreement. Those documents help to solidify the relationship between the two parties and also set the specific responsibilities and expectations moving forward. The memorandum of understanding itself provides that the borough and the authority will enter into a municipal services agreement, which I will cover next. This memorandum of understanding requires it to have a ten-year term for payments to be made to the borough, and again, I'll discuss that next, and to extend out the authority's articles of incorporation for ten years. There's an acknowledgement within the MOU that as a result of the changes, there will be adjustments to the sewer rates with respect to the borough's stormwater management system. And we discussed some of the issues related thereto earlier. It contemplates that the authority would actually take over the borough's stormwater management system. Obviously, it's already maintaining the sanitary sewer system, so this would add the stormwater system to the list of items that they're responsible for. To effectuate that transfer, this memorandum requires the authority to engage a firm to do a stormwater fee feasibility study. Then they need to set forth a timeline for how long that study will take. And then when the study is done, the borough would convey the system over to the authority for a nominal amount of one dollar, and the authority will then have the ability to establish a fee schedule that's consistent with the study that they perform, and will then maintain the stormwater system moving forward. With that, the additional items relate to property that's owned by the authority. So there is a property that currently contains the community garden. That would be transferred over to the borough, and the borough will impose a deed restriction limiting use of that property to open space into the future. The authority would be required to convey the salt pile property to the borough, which is parcel number zero five dash zero zero dash zero two three zero eight dash zero zero dash nine. If the authority decides to hire a new executive director, they will consult with the borough manager as part of that process. And the authority will also consult with the borough before buying or selling any additional sanitary sewer systems. So as you can tell, it establishes a relationship moving forward and also addresses some outstanding issues, such as the future fate of those properties, which will now be protected into the future. So with that, this memorandum of understanding is up for a vote this evening. And I should note, the authority approved the MOU at their last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Is there anyone for public comment on this agenda item this evening? So if council desires, the motion would be to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Borough of Conshohocken and the Conshohocken Sewer Authority. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is the municipal services agreement I mentioned previously. So this agreement, in essence, is a recognition that the borough provides significant municipal services to the authority, which has property in the borough, it has infrastructure within the borough, and the borough performs, and I'll get on it a little bit in greater detail, but the borough performs significant services for the authority. That being understood, this agreement would provide that the authority would make an annual payment to the borough in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for those services rendered. This agreement would be for a ten-year term, and the services provided include but are not limited to police, fire, and other emergency services, specialized emergency services related to the hazardous substances stored on the authority's property, assistance from the borough's public works employees during emergencies at the sewage treatment plant, protection of the authority's sewage treatment plant, manholes and sewer mains affected by borough repaving projects, and such other services as the borough currently provides or will provide. Those payments are to be made in two installments, one in June and one in December of each year. This also gives the opportunity to the authority, if it so chooses, to use office space here in this building or storage space here in this building. There's a provision that if they do that, we can negotiate a separate lease for that space, and the fee provided under this agreement is to be renegotiated in good faith after ten years. This agreement is up for a vote this evening. That's it.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item this evening? With no public comment, the motion would be to approve a municipal services agreement between the Borough of Conshohocken and the Conshohocken Sewer Authority.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council member and mayor matters. The first item is consider approving the 2022 Annual Conshohocken Arts Festival and Car Show, and I will turn this over to Mayor Arrington.
Thank you, President Leonard. Yeah, I'm really thankful that I inherited this really fun event and have been able to put my own spin on it the last five years. I think last year, we really hit our stride. We generally closed down 11th to Elm Street, and we have car programming for the car show down to Sixth Avenue, and then sixth to about Second Avenue with arts vendors. We were able to fill the entire eleven blocks last year. Our main stage is at Eighth Avenue in Fayette, so we plan to keep pretty much everything the same as last year. The only addition is we are looking to have an acoustic stage at the library so that we can have some music down at the lower end as well. But yeah, we feel really good about where we've come in the last five years. And then, anything else there, Brittany? Just the traffic, that's almost exactly the same as last year. So we're going to close down at Elm Street, and we're going to do check-in at 10th and Fayette, and close Fayette off at 11th Avenue. And then just some shots from last year, it was super hot, which we can deal with as long as it's not raining. So we're looking to do pretty much the same thing. And one of our goals, as always every year, is to involve all our community nonprofits, such as the Parks Committee, the EAC. We had our local cheerleading school do performances, Distaffos martial arts, obviously, the Art League, who's one of our main benefactors, and SEPTA just reached out with a big promotion they want to do with a big bus they want to park on Fayette. So we're going to continue to do that, and with your approval, we will put it on June 4th.
Thank you, Mayor Arrington. So since we do need to have a motion for your agenda item this evening, I am going to call for any public comment first.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Could you, it's an arts and car festival, and it is an amazing, family-friendly event that we have every year, but I am wondering, can you tell us a little bit more about the things that happen at this event that are more child-oriented?
So it's not in the same vein as Fun Fest, which has the big blowups and is really geared a little more towards actual children. This is kind of more of a general public event, so no alcohol, but I will tell you, we have kids that love the cars. We had banged up destruction derby cars one year, and the kids were like taking pictures and hanging out all over them. Obviously, they love the bands that are there. We are also encouraging everyone to continue to support our local businesses. So that combined with like the dancing and all the community groups just makes it a fun, family event. I don't know if I would say it's necessarily geared specifically to kids, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? And no public comments, so with that, if council so desires, the motion would be to approve the 2022 Annual Conshohocken Arts Festival and Car Show on June 4th, 2022, with the rain date of June 11th, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor Arrington. Ms. Elm, do you have any comments this evening?
I do, thank you, President Leonard. This Saturday is Conshohocken Little League opening day. The kids will be walking from the community center over to Suck Cliff Park, so be advised that there'll be some road closures. Parking will also be tight around the park for a better part of the day, so try to plan your trips accordingly. And it should be a very fun day if you've never been down, even if you don't have any kids, it's fun to come watch them play. Everybody plays each other within the Conshohocken Little League, so it's a great, family, fun day.
Thank you, Stacy. Anita?
Yeah, just a reminder that the weather is getting really nice now, and all the little winds that have suddenly appeared in our neighborhood are running all over the place, so drivers, please be aware of them.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Nothing calling.
Adrian?
The Denofrio Classic is in its sixtieth year and currently going on at the community center, Fellowship House, so go check out a game.
Thank you, Adrian. Ms. Tina?
I do not have anything, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to say I am proud of you for that. Vice President Sokolowski?
Just an update for the Sewer Authority. We hired an executive director who is down there doing great things with our staff and some identifying areas with the plant that we can get up to date, and just some opportunities that we probably didn't know that we didn't know. The other thing is, we did have an unannounced inspection today by the DEP. They came by and flying colors, so good things are happening, and we thank the men and women who work at the Sewer Authority, because a lot of changes in a short period of time, and they're doing very well with that. And we have a full board, so I'm very excited about that as well.
That's green. Thank you, Tina. Anyone for public comment this evening? Mr. Candelore, you can come up first, please. Again, for the record, you do need to state your name and address.
Phil Candelore, 431 East 11th Avenue, Conshohocken. Two things.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to see that the borough and the Sewer Authority are kind of working together, because that was, for years, a big kind of disconnect, so it's neat to see that happening. Number two, can you clarify the motion on the Beer Fest? Because it was hard to hear, and it sounded like you denied it for the next three years.
Yes, that would be the clarification, you are correct. We did deny it for the next three years.
They were not going to let him do it at the Afield.
No.
All right. I think that's a loss for the borough, but my.
And we appreciate your opinion and your comments.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Good evening, Jaclyn. I do need you to state your name and.
Jaclyn Lachlan, 111 East 10th Avenue. My question is also based on the Beer Fest. I just wanted to know why it was canceled, dismissed for the next three years. I couldn't hear the reason why.
So it is only a public comment, but I will say it is the option of cancel to accept or decline, and we chose to decline.
Okay, I wasn't sure, because I wanted to understand it only because as a Rotary Club, we just want to know what the reason is so that if we go and try to do it somewhere else, you know what I mean, like what the hindrance is, so we won't repeat it.
I think if the Rotary Club wants to reach out to our administration, they can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Mike McQuaid, 112 West 9th Avenue. First thing, Mr. Mayor, car show? Even though it's not meant for kids, my four love it, look forward to it every year, especially last year, my youngest pulled, he pulled two winning tickets out of Sarah's basket, so it was great. We ate over at Southern Cross, really loved it. But really, seriously, just to add my voice to Mr. Candelore and to Jaclyn, with regard to Beer Fest, I'd ask again, except for Councilwoman Tino, any comment as to why? I can understand right to decline, and I have no relationship, don't know him, but just curious as a resident. Understand the idea of declining maybe for one year, but to decline through 2024 without explanation?
So the reason for these three years is because that was what was requested?
If that was what was requested, but I think as our elected officials, a little bit of color, some background, some insight might be warranted. Why?
I understand. Thank you.
Walt Hartnett, 349 Spring Mill Avenue, but I come to you more as the commander of the VFW at 300 East 5th Avenue. I have information here about Memorial Day, our flag planning, which a lot of you have attended for both St. Matt's Cemetery and also Calvary. We'll be doing them on May 21st and May 28th. I'll leave these flyers up here at the front if you want to take a look at them. Oh, there you go. We put out close to forty-five hundred flags, and even though none of the cemeteries are in Conshohocken Borough, they are well-respected and represented by Conshohocken residents or past Conshohocken residents, and we have a lot of volunteers and helps putting forty-five hundred flags out when you have that much people attending as well. flags out when you have that much people attending as well. I also have the schedule for the day of Memorial Day. We do 13 sites around the Borough and in the Borough. This is tentative right now because I'm still waiting to hear back from White Marsh and Plymouth as far as a couple of other sites that we do put it out at, you know, as far as where we go and do our services. But it's a long day on a bus. The mayor has traveled with us and, but we always love when council shows up to any or all of these events, we will include you, we will make you part of the event because we want to make sure that we're, we're seen. So that's the, my, my first comment. The second, the Hometown Hero banners. I understand they're going back up for Memorial Day. They're supposed to be up for Memorial Day, too, Veterans Day. I don't know the timetable when we're planning to get them up. I would like them up the week before Memorial Day, so that way they are up for actual Memorial Day. I don't know where, you know, they're, I, I don't know where they're going to be placed. I know they're not going to be on Fayette Street, but I haven't heard a ironclad what street we're putting them on, but I wanted to kind of include it in the route or put it on our agenda if we can, so we can go, you know, travel down that road and see the Hometown Hero banners that come out. And then third, and it's one of my things that I bring up every time I'm here, Second and Fayette, the monument that is there, it's really beaten up, it really looks bad. It's not something that, you know, I, I have a lot of pride in, and I, I bring things like this. This is a book, this is CONVETS, which was the organization that was formed that raised a quarter of a million dollars to put that together at Second and Fayette. It was members of the VFW post, members of council, and then it was the, the man who this, this room is named after was very instrumental in it, and also Conshohocken VFW post and the Lanuti post all had members on it. And I just, I just wish there was some type of solution. I know it's a very tough thing because nobody wants to close Second Street, nobody wants to, to block off that street, and it's just getting beat up. Every time I go by it, I just, and that rolls into my last point, and I, I asked council to do this. We have a lot of great advisory councils here, we have a lot of, of great boards. If we could have a veteran advisory board, whether it be five or seven members, members from the community that want to bring things up that are veteran-related, that can help out. We have a great veteran population in this community. We've grown by 10% year over year for the past six years. I have 160 members on my VFW post, and those are only combat veterans. So there are many other non-combat veterans who cannot be active members of my post. So whether it's reconstituting CONVETS, whether it's reconstituting anything, because this was funded by the Borough, the mayors were all involved, you know, we had a lot of public monies that came in to help us raise that. So that's all I wanted to bring up this evening, and I definitely would like to, maybe not, the third Wednesday's not bad, good for me, but maybe the next, the first Wednesday, I would definitely like to be on the agenda and maybe have a little more of a conversation about that and things that we can do as far as, for the veteran community. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Carol Smith, 109 Maple Street. The art and car show is always good. I'm glad it was expanded from the car show, and we do new things for adults as well in Conshohocken, which brings me to the Beer Fest. I would like to know why it was canceled. I've been to the Beer Fest every time it's been opened, and it's a great event for our area. It highlights Conshohocken, and as a former Rotary member, the Rotary does terrific work in this area. So I think as a citizen, we, we should know why you, you voted against it because we're developing Conshohocken, we're gonna have 4,000 new people coming within a few years. It's a great event that highlights that area, it works great in that stadium. I've never had a problem being up there, I've never seen a problem with anybody there. So it was incredibly surprising to hear the denial. So I think we do have a right to know your reasons for that, since I've never saw a problem with the event previously. And lastly, I want to say, you know, thank you for the sewer. We do have an agreement. The sewer has been run well for at least 10 years since I've been on the board. We got over $2 million in grants for the Sewer Authority. The relationship has always been appropriate between parties, so I'm glad we have that agreement. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Meeting adjourned.